Like to call the meeting to order. Good evening. This is the May 13th, 2025, meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board. We will start with introducing the board members and staff members present. I am Teresa Flynn.
Carlos Garcia.
Beth Cassavant.
Michelle Conlon.
Greg Richards.
Kevin Muzikar, Town Manager.
Justin Dobson, Assistant to Town Manager.
This being our first meeting following the annual town election, our first order of business is to reorganize the board. There are three designated roles: Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk. The Chair presides over meetings, sets agendas, and represents the board in official capacities. The Vice Chair acts in the absence of the Chair, and it is our practice that the Chair makes motions during our meetings, and the Clerk is the signatory of certain documents and, in our practice, seconds motions during our meetings. So I want to note that while these roles carry specific responsibilities in the board's operations, all members of the Select Board hold equal authority in decision-making. With that said, I am willing and able to serve as Chair if that is the pleasure of the Board.
I would like to nominate you, and I would like to note your service over the past two years as Vice Chair. I think that you are very well positioned and well-prepared to take on the role of Chair and would appreciate if you would elevate your leadership and, you know, be Chair for this year. So I'm nominating Teresa Flynn as Chair.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, I will entertain a motion for Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Beth Cassavant to serve as Vice Chair.
Is this Cassavant?
You willing to do that? Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And finally, may I have a motion for Clerk?
Colleagues, I'd be interested in serving in the Clerk position, so.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Garcia to be Clerk.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, let's swap nameplates. The next item on our agenda is to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number three is to approve the minutes of the April 29th, 2025, meeting.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm just abstaining because I was not.
One abstention. Motion passes. Thank you, Greg. Item number four is announcements and reports. I would like to start with congratulating Michelle on your reelection to the Select Board. Anything you'd like to say?
Sure, yeah. Thank you to everybody who engaged in this election. It was a busy, busy campaign season for everybody, and congratulations to Greg. And we have a lot of new faces at town meeting, which is very exciting, so appreciate all the engagement and the interest in local government, so.
Great, thanks. And Greg Richards, congratulations on your election and welcome to the Board.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say?
Yes, I do.
Thank you for bringing your fan club.
Yeah, I, trust me, I didn't invite them. But first, I actually do want to thank a couple of people specifically. First, my wife Christie and my son Gavin, because they did sacrifice a lot over the past two months and actually probably the last year as we've kind of gone through this whole process. And I do appreciate their support because without them, I definitely wouldn't be sitting here right now, so I do appreciate that. I also want to thank, you know, just the residents and the voters of Shrewsbury who put their faith in me to be sitting here tonight, and it is a very humbling experience going through it, a very stressful experience, but very, very rewarding, you know, to an election night. And so I do want to just thank everybody within Shrewsbury, and I'm looking forward to actually working with everybody on this Board for the betterment of our town, so looking forward to be here. Thank you.
Great, thank you. One other thing I would like to say is that our colleague, Justin Dobson, I learned, just completed his master's program and received a master's in Public Administration from Clark University, so congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I have a couple of other announcements, but Board members, before I launch into those, do any of you have any announcements this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have one. Just wanted to share with the Board that at the May 8th Affordable Housing Trust meeting, the Trust voted to fund a portion of the professional services required for the Housing Authorities Project on Elizabeth Street where they're looking to create 22 affordable units. And I will certainly keep the Board apprised as we continue to engage with local partners on our mission and goals.
Great, thank you. Want to remind the public about Select Board Office Hours. They're held every month on the second Tuesday from 5:30 to 6:30 before the regular Board meeting across the hall in Conference Room A. This is an opportunity for residents to meet with two Board members in a less formal environment and discuss anything within the Board's purview. So thank you to Beth and Carlos for hosting this evening's Office Hours. Also, pre-town meeting is this Thursday at 7:00 PM at Oak Middle School. The meeting will be led by Moderator Jim Kane, who will provide additional explanations and procedural information regarding the annual town meeting. All town meeting members and interested residents are invited to attend this meeting. And that leads us to our annual town meeting next Monday, May 19th, at 7:00 PM, also at Oak Middle School. This is the annual meeting of the town's legislative body where the town budget and various articles are discussed and voted upon by town meeting members. Item number five on our agenda is the Town Manager's Report.
Good evening, Board members. A couple of updates from me. The first, I'm really excited to share that we have finally made it the whole way through the tax foreclosure process for 15 Maple Avenue, which is the Empire Dry Cleaners. And we actually got a really favorable surprise at the end of the hearing on May 8th, where the judge had asked the lawyer for the current owners if they were going to seek their option to redeem the property, which means they pay in full all the taxes and fees that are due. And their lawyer responded no, that they didn't intend to redeem it. So rather than use the statutory 12-month period for the right of redemption, the judge has defined July 11th as the redemption date. So that means the town would have full clean title to the property as soon as July 11th. So really excited about that. Thought we had another year to go in this process, which has been, you know, about 26, 27 months in the making at this point. So that will allow us to start planning for the use of the property, engaging with this Board, and finding the next right steps for that location. So I'm really happy about that.
Honestly, never thought I'd see the day.
Yeah, seriously. It's taken a long time. Additionally, I wanted to recognize Kevin Esposito, who is the Parks Maintenance and Cemetery Division Manager. He has received his Certified Park and Recreation Professional Certificate through the National Recreation and Parks Association. This is something that Kevin has been working on for the past several years, and we're proud of his continuing education and professional development in service to the community. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you.
And before we go on, I just had one question for the Manager, not really related to your report, but I've just noticed a lot of signs cropping up around town, and I had gotten a couple of calls from residents, specifically in front of the library and then on Route 9 around the Price Chopper, CVS area, just throughout town, right? And we all know that they're not supposed to be placed on land that is owned by the town or isn't private property. And so I know that our DPW does tend to go around and pick them up, but I didn't know if there was any way to follow up with the people who keep putting the signs up, just to ask them or let them know that it is, I believe it's an ordinance not to be putting them out on town-owned land.
Correct. Yeah, so we'd be happy to do that. I'll see where, when the last collection was and what recurring signs we have and we'll reach out.
Seem to have just exploded into town. Thank you.
Item number six is public comment pursuant to Select Board Policy 31 to offer citizens the opportunity to provide public comments during Select Board meetings on matters within the Board's authority. No one signed up for public comment this evening, but as a reminder, members of the public have until the end of business on the Monday prior to our Tuesday meetings to sign up, and we encourage those who are interested to do so. Item number seven on our agenda is a 7:05 public hearing to review and act to consider adjusting the pricing associated with the Solid Waste Enterprise, including pay-as-you-throw trash bag fees and related charges. So as Board members know, part of the funding model for the municipal facilities optimization projects, which we will discuss further under Agenda Item 9, relied on utility fees, including those associated with the Solid Waste Enterprise. In light of the project not proceeding, the recommended adjustments to the Solid Waste Enterprise pricing will be amended to ensure that an unnecessary cost is not imposed on residents. So at this time, until we decide next steps, I think continuing this item will allow for further revisions to the proposed pricing changes and provide Board members with the time necessary to review them. I believe, are there members of the public that wanted to speak during or on this matter? Or no? Okay. If there's any related discussion, Mr. Muzikar, did you have anything?
No, you covered all of it.
Okay, so then if everyone is in agreement, I'd entertain a motion to continue the hearing until May 27th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll just say for the record, we'll schedule that for 7:05, Justin, as long as there's nothing else currently on the.
Correct.
Great.
Item number eight is a presentation by Ramesh Razdan, Lead Petitioner, regarding Article 29 in the May 2025 Annual Town Meeting. If you'd like to come forward.
Madam Chair, I believe there was a resident that had wanted to speak that may have just come back in the room regarding the pay-as-you-throw.
Okay.
Issue. I don't know since we just closed the public hearing.
Pardon me for one second. I apologize. We were, we discussed, are you here to talk about the pay-as-you-throw? Were you here for the public hearing?
They are.
They want to know if you want to talk.
Oh, it's on the agenda, yes.
Sorry for choppiness. We discussed that we were going to continue the hearing until our next meeting so that we could review what the pricing impacts would be since they were tied to the municipal facilities optimization project that was not voted on at our town election. So I apologize for the inconvenience, but we are going to continue the hearing at our next meeting.
We're going to continue the hearing, Madam Chair. We're going to continue to the next meeting. I thought the page was wrong.
Then I'm going to talk about it tonight. I spent my time coming to this meeting. I went to the senior center. I was told to go there. There's no pay-as-you-throw over there. There's no payoff with, so.
Okay.
So I'm being inconvenienced. I'm 83 years old. Thank you very much.
Ma'am?
This is a great town.
Ma'am, ma'am.
I've only been here my whole life.
Ma'am.
Stop it.
Apologies. So again, this is the citizen's petition seeking to ban the sale of non-carbonated, unflavored, single-use plastic water bottles that contain less than one liter in the town of Shrewsbury, effective January 1st, 2027. So if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and your co-speakers.
Sure, absolutely. Good evening and thank you for the time today. My name is Ramesh Razdan, and with me are two high school students today. We are actually missing two because they're in honors class today, as in the high school, so maybe you want to have a.
Yeah, my name is Prabha Vat Lamudi, and I'm a junior at the Shrewsbury High School.
My name is Gia Sharma, and I'm a junior at the Public High School.
I'm also honored to be part of the Sustainability Committee, which we are starting in Shrewsbury, so fantastic opportunity here. But what we're here to talk about is a critical topic about sustainability. We all know that we are now living in a sustainable environment, sustainable planet today. Shrewsbury has been an exemplar town. We have done a lot of good things in the past, and we want to continue that journey as we think about, like, what do we take next steps? So today, we're talking about a plastic bottle ban, plastic bottle reduction, not a ban, in the town of Shrewsbury. And our journey really started a few months ago when we started to explore what other towns are doing. And I think as we go through the process, there are roughly 28 towns within Massachusetts who have already banned that. And we learned from that, what they have done, how they have done. We'll talk about that in a lot more detail. And our goal would be to spend roughly 10 to 15 minutes on a presentation. We're trying to refine that. But more importantly, to discuss what, why, and how, and that's what the students, high school students, will do. We'll entertain all questions, and I think that's all, everything is fair at the end, so we can, we'll make sure this is the right thing for the town to do. So with that, let me hand it over to Prabha. We can kick us off.
Yeah, so the agenda is going to be first identifying the problem in Shrewsbury and the state in general, and then going on to the impact on how these water bottles are impacting our constituents around Massachusetts and even in the United States, and then obviously we need a solution as well. So how are we going to be solving the plastic water bottle ban after we ban them? And the concerns that arise from the town and how we're going to be adapting to them, and obviously the implementation aspect of it as well. So first, it's identifying the problem and why we are doing this right now. So every year, people in Massachusetts generate a mountain of plastic waste. This is about 3.4 billion plastic water bottles a year. When you look at the United States as a whole, we throw away more than 60 million plastic water bottles just in one day. And the problem with this is that these plastic water bottles are not being recycled. Eighty percent of the plastic water bottles people buy end up in landfills, not recycling bins. And it also takes three times the volume of water to manufacture one water bottle than it does to simply fill it up. A statistic we found that was really interesting was that Americans throw away enough plastic bottles each year to circle the Earth four times. Every hour, we throw away 2.5 million plastic bottles. So our next slide just shows where we find plastic water bottles all over our town. This, for example, was in Stony Hill Park, where we saw plastic water bottles all over the park. But this also extends to Shrewsbury Public High School's parking lot. Just this past day, I found five water bottles laying around the parking lot. I didn't, I wasn't able to take a picture, but this just goes to the extent of how much plastic waste, just in our town specifically, that we are seeing on the streets and the ground. So next, it's identifying the impacts of this bill. So there's three impacts that we want to focus on: the health impact, the environmental impact, and also the economic impact. So something we found interesting when looking at the health impact of this resolution was that children are drinking plastics more. And when we look at the microplastics that these children are drinking, it's more affecting these children than it is the adults. Microplastics have been detected in everyday life, and a study revealed that 10 to 20 times more microplastics are found in infant feces than adults, raising serious concerns about their effects on our children's well-being. But again, this also affects adults as well. Each liter of bottled water contains approximately 240,000 nanoplastics and microplastics. Bottled water can contain 10 to 100 times more plastic than previously estimated in the past. But these bottles also contain large amounts of chemicals when we do manufacture them. And these chemicals, when drinking, can cause cancer and increase in carcinogens, which can lead to diseases such as dementia and can also lead to cardiovascular disease, as many studies have found. So we must protect our environment. One statistic that we found is that 1 million plastic bottles are bought around the world every minute. Out of 2021, more than half a trillion plastic bottles will be sold annually, and this number is simply growing. At best, less than one-third of all plastic water bottles will be recycled. So by using a reusable water bottle, you could prevent an average of 156 plastic bottles annually. But also, we see this in an environmental impact. One is the energy use of these plastic bottles. When you're recycling a plastic bottle, even manufacturing a plastic bottle, it uses a lot more energy than previously estimated. This can cause a lot of natural resources and even greenhouse gas emissions. And obviously, like I was previously stating, we also see this plastic waste all over their oceans and in marine animals who are eating the plastic bottles when they're trying to get their food. And this serves a problem not only to the human health, but also to these animals, and that's a serious concern. And obviously, like I stated, the greenhouse gas emissions, to one, recycle these, also to be manufacturing these plastic bottles, use a lot of carbon dioxide. And obviously, as we see in the status quo, we are seeing a large amount of greenhouse gas emissions, and the best way to reduce this is through this bill as well. But also, something that we notice is the economic impact as well. Bottled water also costs 100 times more than tap water to produce. Tap water costs less than half a penny per gallon, while bottled water costs an average of $1.11 per gallon in 2016. And obviously, with inflation and the high costs that we are seeing in the status quo, this number is simply growing. According to Harvard Energy and Facilities Department, tap water is 3,000% less expensive per gallon than bottled water. So by using a reusable option like this, we can save money, but also help the environment as well.
But now onto solutions. First things first, we need to make it clear that incineration is not the answer. It uses resources to burn and causes harmful chemicals to enter our food chain. Household air pollution from solid fuel combustion is a major contributor to air pollution and poor health. Burning plastic, in particular, can generate and release pollutants like microplastics and other toxins that can disrupt neurodevelopment, endocrine, and reproductive functions. However, recycling is also short-term. Massachusetts has a residential recycling rate of 27%. The US recycling rate for plastic is very low, estimated to be around 5% to 6%. Plastic is not infinitely recyclable. Plastic degrades with each recycling cycle, meaning it can only be recycled a limited number of times. Recycling for alternatives is better. Aluminum cans are recycled at a rate of around 50 to 71%, while plastic bottles have recycling rates between 29% and 40%. An international aluminum institute states that approximately 75% of all aluminum ever produced is still in use today. This high recycling rate is due to aluminum's ability to be recycled indefinitely without losing its properties. Now, what are some alternatives? We have two that are very appropriate: reusable water bottles and bottles over one liter. So what are they? They are durable bottles made of stainless steel, glass, or BPA-free plastic that can be refilled and used for years. Costing and funding options are the bulk of the cost is $3 to $6. A Penn State University study found that the average American can save $1,236 per year if they're using a reusable water bottle instead of buying plastic. That approximately averages out to $6,180 for five years. That's typically the minimum life expectancy of a reusable water bottle. Now, aluminum is one of the key choices. Research shows aluminum is more sustainable than plastic since it uses less energy to make and is infinitely recyclable. Now, here are some very famous plastic bottle companies that are shifting to alternatives. Dosney Water, which is very famous, currently being sold in Fallmouth, MA, Poland Spring Water, and of course, Aquafina. Now, what about town implementation? Already Lexington has decided to implement water refill stations. Two quotes are being shipped. Officials said 3,637 plastic water bottles were refilled in the first week after the refilling stations were installed. Second, refill numbers have grown at such a rate that after a full year, 128,750 fewer non-biodegradable plastic bottles would be going into area landfills. Now, Shrewsbury has drinkable tap water, but it can improve. A statistic says, for the latest quarter assessed by the US EPA from April 2024 to June 2024, tap water provided by Shrewsbury was in compliance with federal health-based drinking water standards. Now, congratulations, Massachusetts. Already 28 other MA communities have passed bylaws. Some include Arlington, Concord, and Lexington. Town implementation for Lexington, they have already passed a ban on the sale of water in plastic bottles last year at a town meeting on single-serving sizes only. This was done by a citizen's petition, not by the local government, but by citizens who are actively seeking change. Town went towards more reusable options, and they implemented more water fill stations.
So Concord, one of the biggest or most known towns that have implemented this ban, did so in 2010 and was the first town in the United States to ever do so. A group in Lincoln, Lincoln was a town that also did ban these plastic water bottles, went to Concord to ask businesses about the ban. The manager in Crosby's, which is a famous business in Concord that runs there, was asked about the impact of the bottle ban on the businesses. He said that customers had mentioned the change in packaging from plastic to recyclable, but they were still purchasing water. There had been no drops in profit and no drop in the number of customers coming in. He reassured Lincoln businesses that they have nothing to worry about and reiterated that the bottle ban has had no impact on Crosby's bottom line. But again, this applies to Hingham and even Sudbury as well, and these are all based off their own town statements when we have contacted them. Their town said that they had little to no cost. So specifically, when we asked them about the refilling stations around town, they were able to apply for some grants, which were able to put more refilling stations around their town. But they also saw an increase in reusable alternatives as a result, so they bought more reusable, such as aluminum and even these metal bottles as well. Sudbury found a similar situation as well, where they're invested in water filler stations, and businesses were able to adopt these small and large changes to this bill as well. So we're already supporting a Shrewsbury town initiative, right? In our Sustainability Committee, we have a proposal that is meant to reduce single-use plastic bottles in order to reduce emissions to zero. This plan is just one step, this bill is just one step further to an already-town initiative, and we're just seeking support on what our town already wants to do, but we're simply making it quicker. So our goal is to free plastics bottles by 2027. We're giving businesses and even municipals one and a half years to do so, and we're hoping that this is enough time for businesses to adapt, considering that we are seeing a lot of alternatives already in the status quo. So we're now open to any questions that the Select Board may have.
Great, thank you so much. Board members, any comments or questions?
I guess, I'll go.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys coming. I just applaud, you know, you bringing this forth. I know it's not easy. I've done it before. And to come up in front, not only the finance committee, but the Select Board, and I, you know, I welcome any other high school students who want to bring something in front of the Board. I think this is really good, and it's a great experience for you guys, so I do appreciate you doing that. I do have a couple of questions, though. First, you mentioned that in Massachusetts, there was a 27% recycling rate. Do you know what this recycling rate in Shrewsbury is?
I do not have the exact number that it is in Shrewsbury, but I'm assuming it's around the same.
Even with the bins, the curbside, do you think you're only getting 27%?
Well, obviously, it could be definitely higher than that because we are great at recycling, but that doesn't eliminate the fact that these bottles aren't being recycled.
Okay. Did you guys do, like, you mentioned some comments from other towns on businesses, but did you do, like, survey any stores within Shrewsbury as far as, like, Market Basket or Price Chopper and understand what the fiscal impact would be to them?
A lot of these big businesses, like these big retailers, aren't really able to share their finances directly to us. But when we talk to local small businesses, especially in center of town, for example, I believe we talked to Village Pizza, and they told us that they were okay with the ban, especially when we started telling them about the health impacts and about how this is more than just the environment, but also when people are drinking these plastic bottles, it serves as a health deficit for them. So we've also talked to a few other of the businesses in Shrewsbury. I didn't really directly talk to them. One of the other high schoolers that is not here tonight has talked to them, but I can definitely send you the businesses that we have talked to and the testimonials that we got from them.
Yeah, I'd be curious to the retailers, because I guess philosophically speaking, I don't believe that, let's say, the government should be banning things because I think the market will drive behavior, you know? I don't know if you ever go outside on 4th of July and, what do you hear? Here in Massachusetts? Fireworks, and those are not permitted here, yet people go and get them because that's, there's a market for it. So I personally could see similar things, saying that I think there's a definite need for the convenience factor of water bottles and plastic, and I think there is, you know, I worry that it could be a little bit of aggressive impact to some because the costs associated with aluminum or another alternative are much higher. I can buy a case of water for like $5.50. If I bought that same case of water in aluminum, how much would it cost me? It's significantly more money. So those are some of the concerns, because I don't know that there is a great alternative out there in that size. And when you get up at the larger sizes, like you mentioned, I know. And when you get up at the larger sizes, like you mentioned, I know personally, people who are a little, the senior citizens have a hard time lifting it. Because the weight of some of those larger containers is uh prohibitive, so. Personally, I just worry that there's a lot of maybe unintended consequences of doing something like this that. I think we really would wanna, in my opinion, kinda vet out a lot more thoroughly before we just flat out ban something.
Yeah, so we actually.
I think one thing that you have to understand is if you just look at economically, I think I agree with that. But fundamentally, we have to look at, look at CNN last week, look at uh Wall Street Journal. The im- health impacts outweigh uh where the problem is. I think CNN, I think if I'm not mistaken correctly, said fifteen to twenty percent of deaths right now are attributed to plastic. Because the microplastics are a big cause of problem, because we used to them and we. The other part that I think we have to understand, and this is like. Body and you look at it, and this is why when we went to the health board, everybody in health board clearly understood this is a problem. Body can flush out everything, even if the plastic takes, but the uh the brain cannot. This brain doesn't have exhaustion to do that. So we've, uh at this time, the assumption is roughly one spoon of plastic is in everybody's uh brain. What that is doing to us, I think we don't know that. We know that it's happening, so I think I I agree with you if we look at purely as an economic impact, but the health impacts outweigh, that's why twenty eight towns have done that.
Yeah, one, I'll make one, one final comment, then I'll let my colleagues speak. On on that health side of it, though, two, two things. Number one, you're not proposing banning all plastic containers, so you'd still be getting plastic regardless. Not only just from liquids, but also from foods and other things that are in there. Number two, I worry that people are gonna make poor choices, because I think the health impact of the alternatives, sugary drinks, energy drinks is much worse. Let's say, my opinion, than potentially what the exposure to plastic is. So that's just my opinion on the matter, but I'll let my.
I actually want to talk about the economic side of this for a bit, because I do believe that's something that is a big concern for all the select. Board and also the town, because we did get a lot of emails about it. So actually, when, when you look at this holistically, right? The demand isn't for plastic, it's for water bottles. And when you look at the timeframe, we are giving these businesses one and a half years. We're not eliminating the supply of water bottles, we're simply replacing them. And when you look at aluminum, right now in the status quo, there's a supply for them, but there's simply no demand. That's why you see these costs being so high than they are, because nobody's willing to buy these aluminum cans and aluminum water bottles. Because plastic is right in front of them. But once you start transitioning away from the supply and increasing the demand of aluminum, you're bound to see these prices naturally decrease. So while I do agree that you might see this short-term impact, the demand is not for plastic, but rather these other, but rather for water bottles as a whole. Start transitioning our market towards, you're gonna see these prices decrease and you're gonna see consumers willing to buy them, because that's the best alternative that we have. Hope that makes clears it up.
Can I ask a question um at the high school where you go? Do they sell water bottle? Okay, have you tried to have the schools transition away from selling them?
We have not, but what we've noticed is the school does sell aluminum water bottles as an alternative as well. And what I've noticed around the school is that a lot of students are buying these aluminum water bottles. I don't have one exactly with me, but I did have one at the finance committee. There's like a wee size water bottle. And they are pretty efficient for the students as well. But I do agree that, you know, the high school is a situation where we need to address. But I agree that I think that the town is a bigger problem to address, because it does help eliminate the ban quicker than just the school.
Related to that, this ban would. Not prohibit water bottles in vending machines at the high school or other establishments. I just, because we're looking at banning, you know, people going into their corner stores. But I don't think your ban would apply to people that maybe order through a delivery service or a vendor.
Is like someone's ordering a plast- or plastic water from Amazon, that would be allowed technically. I'm not too sure on the vending machine specifically. I will need to look into that, but our bylaws is any stores will not be able to sell. Plastic water bottles under one liter.
I have a question. Can you clarify, is this just the single bottle or is this a whole case of them also?
I believe that if the case is uh one liter or less, considering each water bottle, it would also be them as well.
So you couldn't go into Price Chopper and buy a twelve pack of of water bottles?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, because I'm not sure that that's clear to people. It's the question I get most and I went through. And I listened to the Board of Health and the Finance Committee and I looked at your materials. I think that you're gonna get that question at town meeting, so I I would, I just ask that you double check on that.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
If I may add, I was also, I was under the impression that it was only applying to. Single purchase at point of sale, like single water bottles under a liter. So my understanding, you know, and having watched Finance Committee and and the Board of Health as well. That it didn't apply, like you, you know, from somebody going to the grocery store and buying a case of them. But it was just the single, like one, like you would get at a convenience store or something like that, so.
We will definitely check into that, but I'm pretty sure it's also the cases if.
I think the definition wise, it is called single-use plastic. How it gets, I think packaged is a different problem. I think, but the def- because it's a single-use thing, you can't, you know. We're not, we're not trying to say how it gets, it could be five bottles, it could be ten bottles, it could be hundred bottles. You could send all of that, but all of them technically would be banned because they are a single use.
Just wanna thank you for being here. I don't think it's easy, especially as a young person to wanna make a difference and then attend a government, uh several government meetings and. Make your case, so really commend you and your fellow classmates who are not here. I did have a question. Why was the focus limited only to water? And why not include other types of? Other types of beverages?
Yeah, so this is just one small step to a larger problem, right? I think if we started banning like the, all the entire plastic bottles that we have in town, I think that serves a bigger issue that we can't address right now. I think the best thing is banning what's ultimately used the most, which is these plastic water bottles. And I think we're start- starting off small with these one-liter ones. Eventually, it will be going to these larger ones that are over one liter. But right now, I think it's the best way to really create an initiative and create change is by doing this less than one liter plastic water bottle. I hope that answers your question.
Um I think it, I think it does, and you know, Mr. Mr. Rosden, you at the top mentioned that this is a. Plastic bottle reduction, which um I think is an important distinction.
That's correct, yep.
And so I. I appreciate that you've done a lot of work on this and looking at other municipalities and what they have done. I was curious on. You know, I, you noted in your presentation that. The implementation period is longer than what other municipalities have done. Can you talk a bit about why you chose to go that route?
Yeah, I think it's important. I think we understand that right now, it's important to give towns and I think people a longer time. Because it's harder to shift people's mindsets, because we are so fixed on, you know, what we already have in front of us, which is these plastic water bottles. But I think giving that eighteen-month period can do a lot for this town and really developing. And making sure that we have the best alternatives and we have the best solution in order to make this ban the most effective, right? I think giving six months, you know, obviously can work and has worked for these towns. But giving that eighteen-month period just solidifies this to make sure that it hundred percent can be successful.
I think we also understand Shrewsbury is different than Arlington, and I think we need to make sure we respect Shrewsbury as it is. And other towns have generally given six months. So I I I think we are trying to be practical, pragmatic and to make sure we do it. We also think eighteen months hence, most towns would have banned it anyway. Because last time you look at plastic bags, styro- styrofoam, we did it one quarter next time, did Westwood or did Northwood or did, because our friends did that. So you, I think people are worried, the whole people will go other towns, most of the other towns will do that. You look at eight, uh this year ago, probably two towns were blocking. I think you look at, you have to fast forward eighteen months, I would say most of the towns in Massachusetts probably banned it anyway.
Um thank you, tha- that's helpful. And um I guess I was wonder, I'm wondering if in your research in this. How did those other municipalities do their outreach in educating the local business owners and residents about the change that? They're now experiencing.
Yeah, so what they did was they made FR uh FAQs, sorry, and they uh put that on their town websites. These FAQs were one for businesses and then one for uh consumers, right? The businesses would be like, well, alternatives would be applied. Uh I have an example from Hingham, but I do not have it in the slideshow. I'll make sure I have it for a town meeting in case people do wanna know. How they're gonna be, how this is gonna be educated towards all town members after this. But yeah, I think making uh FAQs is really, really important in uh, you know, educating our town. But again, there's other ways we can definitely do this, and I hope to work with the town as well in that eighteen-month period to make sure that people are educated as well.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Uh thank you guys for putting this together. This is a lot of work and I appreciate. The passion that you have um thrown behind it and all the work you put into it. You tied it to some current initiatives and goals that we have as a community. Um and I like that you provided all these resources with links to what other communities have done and the research that you've included in this. Um this is, it is very intimidating to come before um boards and and, you know, kind of come before your government and try to. Encourage change and I love to see young people get involved and get engaged in this stuff, so I really appreciate it. I actually have a question for the town manager. When is our PFAS system scheduled to come online?
In late twenty twenty seven.
Twenty twenty seven, okay. Um one of the things that, you know, kind of reading through this and thinking about. You know, how it would be received by the community and everything is, um, you know, there's, there's sort of this, this persistent um mistrust of the water in Shrewsbury. We have really hard water, it comes from, you know, groundwater, um and it's full of minerals and has some distinct taste and things like that. Um and and in years past, we had an issue with manganese in our water. And we have a system that removes that, so the water, our water quality has improved significantly over recent years. It is safe to drink. I always like to tell people I drink the water, my family drinks it, my kids drink the water. So it is, it is safe to drink, but there's this persistent sort of mistrust of our water in Shrewsbury. Um and with EPA standards changing, um one of my concerns with this was. Um would it, would it, the timeline sort of line up with this PFAS removal plant coming online? So it is reassuring to know that it it does kind of line up with that, so. I appreciate the, the long lead time you put forward to it and. Um I know, you know, a lot of uh environmental initiatives in Shrewsbury have been successful at town meeting. Um and they've come through as citizens petitions and um, you know, we had the styrofoam ban. And uh the, the plastic bag ban and things like that, so I applaud your um, your, your initiative and your passion. And I wish you guys luck.
Thank you.
You know, thanks.
Just one more follow-up.
Yes.
Um you just seem to, to be very knowledgeable, so do you know if there's anything being done on a, on the state level? To sort of unify what the expectation would be for all three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns around the sale of single-use plastic water bottles?
Yeah, in September, I think um the governor of Massachusetts passed a law that would, or not, maybe, maybe around a few months ago. I would say, uh, the governor of Massachusetts passed a law prohibiting state agencies from banning or buying any plastic water bottles from any agency around the state. So that's one step that the state is taking. I think a few years ago, we did have a plastic water bottle bill. Uh ban presented in front of our senate and house, but that did get rejected. However, we are seeing a lot of movement in our state with climate change, as we even banned plastic bags a few months ago. So we're just hoping that with this initiative and getting other towns to also be involved, it can create a reaction with the state as well.
Thanks so much. Appreciate all of your research and all the effort that you put into being here this evening. You're very well-prepared and very well-spoken, all of you.
I will echo those comments. Thank you for being here. You did an excellent job and uh it's very impressive, and I hope if nothing else, this helps prepare you uh for, for the town meeting. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on to agenda item number nine, I just, I want to apologize for what happened earlier. You know, I wasn't clear if the resident wanted to speak or was here to listen. And I was going to say that we would open it back up if she wanted and. I don't know who she is and I would like to reach out to her, so if anyone does know.
Madam, I, I know who, I can get your.
That would be great, thank you. I just, um, I just want to acknowledge that it's frustrating. When people see an item on the agenda and they come and it's, it's not addressed, so I just wanted to apologize. I didn't. It was just clunky with the, the next presenters coming up, so I just wanted to um, to say that. And I will reach out to the resident to see what we can do to make sure she is heard.
She could probably give us her feedback verbally or in an email that we could hold. And then read into the record when we open the public hearing again to prevent her from having to come back out, I believe.
Item number nine on our agenda is to review and discuss the municipal facilities optimization project. So by way of background, special town meeting voted to authorize the appropriation of approximately forty million dollars. To fund the design, construction, repair, renovation and expansion. And or replacement of the town's DPW buildings located at two oh five to two eleven South Street. And the design, repair and renovation of town hall. Approximately two million dollars would be paid through available funds and approximately thirty-eight million would be borrowed. The authorization was subject to and continued contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to approve the debt exclusion. The ballot question was defeated at the May sixth town election. There were nineteen hundred ninety-three yes votes compared to twenty-five hundred twenty-eight no votes. Meaning forty-four percent, forty-four voted yes and fifty-six vote, six, fifty-six percent voted no. So a difference of five hundred and thirty-five votes. So I'd like to start with having Mr. Mizikar outline what he sees as possible paths or options from here. And then have board members react and share thoughts, so we can um talk about next steps.
Thank you. Maybe a bit oversimplistic, but I see three potential path forward that we could discuss. Maybe uh other board members have other ideas, but ju- just really simply. We obviously can stop the project, right? There, there's implications for that. Um there's, there's pros and cons with each one of uh my approaches, but let me just lay out the three approaches. So we could, we, we could stop the project, take no further action. All we would really have to do from a project standpoint is eventually go back and rescind the borrowing authorization through a town meeting process. And vote, or ask town meeting to reallocate the money that has been put there that, that we have. In free cash and from the sale of the easement on Centec Boulevard. We do have the option to, I think, you know, a hundred and eighty degrees from that, just move forward. With the same exact project scope with another ballot question. And then, because the vote at the special election has no implications on town meeting's action. And town meeting action has no implications on, on the elections. Like two separate, both are, you need yeses for both, but one does not impact the other. And then the third would be obviously modifying the scope of the project and then re-asking for consideration. Now that, in my opinion, would require both town meeting action and another um question to be asked through a special election. Because we would want to fully ensure that we're. I mean, I assume we'll be reducing the scope of the project. I assume that the goal would be to reduce the cost of the project at the same time. Time will tell if that's possible. We've seen in the past that sometimes projects have been delayed, scopes have been downgraded. And that it costs more because of time and inflation and, and market conditions. But I think if we act expeditiously over the course of the next six months, we could mitigate that. But regardless, even if we're going to downgrade the scope of the project and downgrade the cost of the project. Town meeting would want to limit the total amount that we would borrow. So I'd wanna go back and undo what was done in April and, and put the new numbers on the table for town meetings consideration. So before I go into the pros and cons. I guess turn it back over to the chair and. See how the board wants to discuss it from there.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be interested in everyone's thoughts. I certainly feel like our. Our first course of action is to really understand why people voted no. I think, I'm, I'm guessing a lot of you have already talked to a lot of residents and I've heard many different reasons. It was too much money. They, they weren't sure what it was. They're concerned, this is just one of many things that are coming down the pike. But I think that in general, um, we really need to reflect on. how many people truly understood. It, it's one thing if people understood and disagreed. Um, but I, I feel like we're in this position where we need a lot more feedback and information to understand and then understand whether or not there's an overwhelming absolutely not or there's a preference to look at a different, you know, scope or, or cost, but, um, I think that, that would be sort of my first, you know, path to deciding what the path is, is to try to get, um, more feedback to understand why, so then we can decide. I think that will inform my opinions on what we do next. I don't know if anyone else has. I'm, I'm sure you do. I, I do, I...
Is there someone who hasn't heard my thoughts in the last week? I mean, I don't think there's one reason. That's the thing, right? And that's what I keep bumping up against is it's difficult to correct when I think there are so many reasons as to why someone would not support the project. Right? And you, I've asked so many people and I get so many different answers. You know, some of it is skepticism of the size of the building based on the size of the police station. And I think that's like the elephant in the room and so I really think it's important to acknowledge that, right? And part of the reason that the police station is the size that it is is because it's meant to be able to serve us for fifty years. And so there has to be room for growth. And what I say to people is if we picked up the old Beal school and put it next to the new Beal school, that building would also look gigantic because it's meant to have room for growing. And I think that that is just a different mindset from the way that buildings were constructed previously, whereas we've talked about high school that needs to be expanded because it basically opened overcrowded because it wasn't built big enough to actually have room to grow. So that's one thing I hear. Um, I, I, I obviously hear the cost, right? Like, okay, if, if the price went up ten million dollars, what's to stop it from going up ten million dollars again? And you know, you have to be able to have a conversation with someone to explain that the initial estimate was incorrect. Like, it was just wrong. There is no scenario in which the building could have been built for the, the estimate that was provided to us initially. And that is a very difficult thing to overcome. Uh, I think there's also just worry about what are the other needs, right? We talk about what else is coming down the pipeline and that's a lot to take in at one time. And I think what we heard from people is just, there's too much, so what we're looking for is for you to slow down. Like, just slow down. We can't do this, 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 so we're just going to do nothing. Um, so one of the things I think we need to do is publish that whiteboarding exercise, that capital planning that we did where we looked on a whiteboard out to like twenty forty. Um, and, and we were, well, I think it was like replacing the roof on, I don't even know.
The new Beal school.
The new Beal school, right? Like, we looked that far out because you know, like a roof lasts thirty years, so you can kind of figure it out, right? So I think we need to publish that so that people can actually see it. And then I really think we need to have a, like, a listening tour. Like, I almost, I think I said it to you, like, I kind of want to put out, like, a message to be like, hey, I'm seeking people who voted no. Can you come and talk to me because I'm too busy, like, hearing from people that voted yes and are asking me why it didn't pass. Right? So I need to get out of my own echo chamber to hear from people who didn't support the project to understand what we do from here.
Um, having worked on the override campaign, a big part of our campaign efforts were, was surround, was surrounding educating the public on proposition two and a half and how it impacts our town and why we are in the financial position that we were in and all of that. So there was a lot of sort of explaining big complicated things in very basic, like, layman's terms and, um, you know, trying, trying to really, like, boil things down to make it so that easily digestible for everybody. And one of the things that I've seen is that the language is very confusing. Um, there was, you know, the, the mailer that went out with the proponent and opponent and there was some confusing language there. And then, you know, the ballot question is very, like, technical legalese and it's kind of a confusing thing. There was no dollar amount on the ballot question, um, on, on the ballot itself. And, um, so I'm, I'm wondering if that, you know, part of this, like, sort of outreach and listening tour and things like that, like, is really, we need to focus on educating and, like, clarifying the message and, um, you know, this, this is tou, it's a tough situation, you know, we, we talk about some of our options are, you know, stopping the project or paring down the scope of the project, but this isn't, it's not like a cosmetic renovation. There, we have systems, big systems that are going to start failing. They're, they are at the end of their designed life. They're at the end of their useful life. Just like, you know, in your home, when your roof is built for thirty years, you know, you have to start thinking twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five years into that, I'm going to need a new roof in the next few years because your roof is going to start leaking. And you can patch it and you can pare it up as much as you can, but someday you are going to actually need a new roof. And we have the same situation with our municipal buildings. So we have these systems, a lot of this, you know, it's systems that, that are going, you know, are reaching the end of their design life and useful life. We have ADA compliance issues. We have fire safety issues. We have life safety issues. We have hazardous materials. So we ta, talk about paring the scope of the project down, but if, if we start removing these things, they're really critical investments that we need to make. And I don't know that paring these items down and pulling them off of the project is going to meet the needs of our, of, of the project. And you know, do we do something halfway? You know, and then we have a situation where, you know, we opened a high school and it was, it was overcrowded, you know, two years later, or we opened the Floral Street School and it was crowded the day, overcrowded the day it opened. You know, we, we, do we want to find ourselves in a situation where we're investing millions of dollars in a project that is not, ultimately not going to meet the needs of our community? So... You know, I don't know, I mean, do we, we don't make a decision tonight, but it's, is this, is this going to be something like that? Is the, you know, municipal facilities optimization committee, like, do we determine whether they continue on? Like, how, what, what is the R step? Like, what, what's, you know, we don't, we're not taking action tonight, but what happens?
I, I think it would be short-sighted to take action tonight.
Yeah.
I think we need to, to reflect on this and, and, you know, carve out time to sort of talk through options and, um, decide how we want to, you know, propose to the town that we move forward. Um, but I, I think those are three paths. I think we need to, you know, I think, I, I can recognize a few things. I can recognize that there were, there were people who were tuned in and either agreed or disagreed. There were people that, you know, were concerned about the process and how did we all of a sudden go up ten million? And it was, you know, we were trying to be transparent. We kind of ballparked a number. And then when we did what the, um, the committee was charged to do, they refined it and they came up with a specific number. To me, if we had gone to town meeting with a number or we had gone to the voters for a number and then the number changed, that would have been a fatal flaw. But again, I think, I was in a meeting where I said, you know, I don't, I don't feel like we're coming, it was just, I can see where, you know, there's a lot of room for improvement. I am not leaning toward not doing anything, but I don't know necessarily what I would recommend. And I do think that, you know, talking to, to more people and getting feedback and, you know, understanding the, the opinions around town hall versus not town hall. There are still people that think we're trying to sort of, you know, squeeze something here and do renovations and if we had unbundled them and we're trying to do it from an optimization point of view, but I, again, I think we have to, um, listen to those viewpoints, understand how we can make it more clear, make the best case we can, because I agree that there are needs. We have to address it. We are going to have to make some investment um, to this, uh, to this infrastructure. The, um, you know, the structural, you know, conditions are just, you know, they have to be addressed. And so I would, I would like to be, you know, thoughtful about how we approach this next step and then inform the committee what their next steps are.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I talked to a ton of people along the campaign specifically about this a lot. And I think, um, one of the areas that you alluded to it there was separating the town hall piece from the DPW project. I think the perception from a lot of residents was kind of like those, say, omnibus bills in Congress where, oh, we're just going to put a bunch of stuff in there so we can get it through because we may have been afraid that we wouldn't have got them to pass separately. But as, as Michelle, like you had said, I think there are valid issues that need to be addressed. And I think some of that got, as I said, forgotten or maybe it, because it was viewed as part of the DPW project. And the other pieces, I really liked the idea of, of a listening tour where we are getting a lot of feedback from, you know, the residents on the no side or people who did vote no. Because I think there's multiple projects, like you mentioned before, Beth, that I think it's, not only the high school, but we talk about when Selco, um, moving headquarters, there's a building on Municipal Avenue. What are we doing with that property? Is that a property that could be reused? Maybe not. But I think a lot of residents had questions about this and I think part of that potential no vote was just uncertainty as to not getting clarification on a lot of other pieces. Because I think all of that, all those pieces play into, I think, some of the decisions people made about why they voted a certain way. But, uh, you know, I think fundamentally, I know that there are things that need to be addressed and obviously we, we need to look at addressing them. But I think it's really important that we do fully understand what the community's feedback is by that vote and that we don't just simply try to push forth and try to put something back out in front of them that isn't really going to get that support because I think it could really put us behind the eight ball on a whole bunch of other projects we might want to do moving forward.
And I, I even, I even think our outreach, I think there was, there was a lot of outreach. There was a lot of opportunity to tour the garages and, and, and see it firsthand. There were videos, but, you know, i- it's always a challenge for us to get the reach, you know, that we want. I think that, um, you know, there were simple things. I had someone tell me that, you know, they said that the proponent in the mailer that went to the voter guide, that went to residents was actually the opponent. And I was like, no, that's, that's not right. And then when I went back and looked at it, it was just the placement. The person's name was like right above the opposition statement. So I was like, okay, I can see if you looked at it, you might be like, oh. You know, there's just, there's just simple things. I think that, yes, forty million dollars is a ton of money. Like, I, I, I get people are just like, do not put any more tax burden on me. But when you explain how we, we timed it specifically with debt that was rolling off, you know, they'd be like, forty million dollars. I said, what's that average increase to you a year? And no one knew. And then I'd tell them and they'd be like, oh, well, you should have said that. And I'm like, I thought we did. But yeah, I think, there's a lot of work to be done and I'd, I'd like to be thoughtful about it and I'm not, you know, I'm not one to really push, push, push on something that people are absolutely adamant about. I think I've, uh, adamant against. I, I think I've heard enough to think that there's um, definitely reason to continue the conversation and, um, you know, again, be thoughtful about next steps, so.
Madam Chair, just, um, just some thoughts from me and I, I know my colleagues have really kind of said everything that's on my mind, but um, I definitely would be in support of doing a, a listening session. I think that that's important so that we can fully understand, um, what the residents' concerns are, whether it was having to do with the scope and size of this project or if it was concerns about future projects and how all those will line up. Um, I think that, um, looking on the perhaps positive side of this, um, I'm glad that the voter guide went out and many people read that and were, um, perhaps for the first time beginning to do their homework and understanding what this project, what the ask was. So I feel like now we have a little bit more of a base of people who understand a little bit more of what it is that we were looking to do, um, with, um, this proposal. So I think that will help inform future conversations whenever we do those listening sessions, since many of those residents have already engaged with that process, so. And then, uh, just, Mr. Mizikar, appreciate you outlining the, the three pathways. I think if we do end up modifying the scope, what I also, again, appreciate is the fact that it will have to go before town meeting again, which, um, we can engage with those town meeting members who hopefully will also engage with their neighbors and with residents in their, um, precincts to get the word out. Because I think, as you noted, Madam Chair, sometimes that engagement piece is, is, can be tough. So.
I could just add one more thing. You know, you're talking about the engagement, right? We asked people to come to us because we wanted them to see the garage, which makes sense, right? But how can we get out to people instead of asking them to come to us? So I know when we did the strategic plan, there was a list of groups, I think, that Taylor went out and met with. I'm wondering if maybe we can leverage some of those groups so that we're actually going to people rather than asking people to come to us. Um, can we set up a table at food truck night? Can we set up a table at the food truck festival? Like, how can we go where the people are so that, I mean, I know they're not going to be able to see the DPW garage, but at least they can get questions answered and we can meet people where they are instead of asking them to meet us at the garage.
If I may add to that, one thing that, um, I know our state rep and our state senator do office hours at the senior center, um, every month. And, um, one of the things I actually was going to, to reach out for future consideration, but doing, we do our office hours here every month and, um, talk about like potentially adding office hours at the senior center. I actually volunteer there every week and I don't sort of share with people that I'm on the select board. I just kind of go and do my thing, but, um, there's a lot of great conversations that happen in that building. And I think that, um, us having more, our board having more of a presence there might be really helpful for the community. Um, but, I think having, you know, finding people, like you said, like finding people where they are, where are they already going? The library, the senior center and these, these sort of, the groups that we reached out to with the strategic plan and things like that might be, uh, the path forward.
Okay, so, uh, what we typically do with issues like this is we'll schedule a time, like a workshop where we can brainstorm, but I think we can also, you know, talk offline and, and maybe, Mr. Mizikar, have you maybe propose some of those ways that we can start to do this listening tour? Because I think having some of that feedback as we get together to talk about next steps would be helpful too, so. I'll work with you to reach out to other board members and get people engaged to the extent that they can and want to and we'll get the ball rolling. And certainly any residents who want to reach out and give us their feedback, we'd love to hear it. Good, bad or otherwise.
Agenda item number ten is to review and act on the May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five annual town meeting warrant recommendations. There are forty-four articles. Um, our process tonight is to document our position on these warrant articles before they go to town meeting for a vote. At town meeting, articles are bundled. It moves things along. I am going to recommend that we go through each article individually. Have Mr. Mizikar give a very brief summary of the article and, um, I think a lot of them will fly through, but board members, you can just let us know, um, if you want discussion on any particular article.
Ready to go?
We are ready to go. Article one.
All right. Uh, article one is to receive reports of town officers and committees. This is a requirement in our bylaws. If an annual written report was not provided, uh, we will have one report that will be given by the facilities optimization committee.
Any discussion? Not a motion to recommend article one?
I move to recommend article one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Article two.
The second is a standing item uh, through the establishment of the Wright and Harlow Trust. Town meeting is charged with setting its membership annually, so we propose to do that through this article.
Discussion? Motion?
I move to recommend article two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Article three.
Under the general laws, municipalities are prohibited from paying bills from a prior fiscal period unless town meeting authorizes such funding. We don't have any bills that would be, uh, considered at this time, but I would request that the board delays its consideration in case something does come up.
Discussion? Motion?
Delay.
Just delay. We're not even going to mo, okay, sorry, article four.
So article four is a... So article four is adjustments to the FY twenty-five operating budget. That is the current fiscal year. We don't have any planned adjustments at, at this time. And while I don't think that there'll be any in the next week, I would also ask that you hold your recommendation on this article in case something comes up.
Article five?
Article five would be to fund the override stabilization account. This budget is fully balanced in that recurring revenues match recurring expenses. No funding is proposed to go into the override stabilization account. The way our bylaws work is that we're required to take action on every article, and we are not able to table it. So a motion has been prepared to add a dollar to the override stabilization account, which we seek to be defeated. So I would request that you do not recommend passage of this article.
Discussion? Motion?
So what do I say? I move the article, and then we vote no, right? Or do I have? Yeah, right? So, motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed?
No.
No.
Article six is the fiscal year twenty-six operating budget. That is the year that starts July first of twenty twenty-five and continues for the next twelve months. This has been thoroughly vetted and considered by the Finance Committee, the Select Board, and other members. This includes all municipal operations, town operations, or excuse me, school operations, and shared operating expenses for nonutility departments.
Discussion? Motion?
Motion to recommend article six?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Article seven?
Article seven is to receive funding from Selco to offset the total, offset the tax rate. It's a pilot payment that we use these revenues to offset costs within the municipal budget. This particular amount of funding comes in from the cable TV aspect, and it is equivalent to the amount that would have been taxed if Selco cable operations were a private entity.
Discussion? Motion?
Motion to recommend article seven?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The same, uh, context for article eight, which is accepting money from the electric division of Selco to offset the tax rate.
Motion to recommend article eight?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article nine?
Finally, article nine of a similar context, but the use of free cash to offset the tax rate.
Motion to recommend article nine?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article ten?
Article ten is the annual operating budget for the, for the solid waste enterprise. An enterprise account uses funds from rates, and those, uh, revenues that are raised can only be used for the expenditures associated with that particular line of business. In this instance, it's the solid waste program or curbside recycling and waste collections.
Motion to recommend article ten?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article eleven?
Article eleven is the sewer department, sewer operations, annual budget. Slightly different, it's not an enterprise account. It was special legislation that was created in nineteen fifty-six, but the same concept.
Motion to recommend article eleven?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twelve is the annual operating budget for the water enterprise and water department.
Motion to recommend article twelve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thirteen is the stormwater enterprise, the same context, uh, revenues coming in from stormwater fees.
Motion to recommend article thirteen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, within the enterprise category, we receive funds from Selco through an assessment on the cable bills and Selco stream bills, and those funds are used to operate public education and general government access channels through Shrewsbury Media Connection, and this is the annual appropriation for those expenses.
Motion to recommend article fourteen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article, I'm sorry, article fifteen is, uh, to fund out-of-pocket costs of disabled police and firefighters who are retired and have, uh, medical issues. Uh, this is a s- a section of the general laws that the town adopted many years ago, and, uh, we're funding, um, those costs for disabled police and firefighters.
Motion to recommend article fifteen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article sixteen is, uh, consideration of putting funds into our insurance trust account. Our insurance trust account is a set aside that we use to cover out-of-pocket costs and deductibles associated with our various insurance line items, primarily police and fire, uh, injured-on-duty coverages.
Motion to recommend article sixteen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article seventeen places funds into the general stable, stabilization account, which is the town's rainy day fund.
Motion to recommend article seventeen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eighteen is to place funds into the sewer stabilization account, which the account solely benefits the sewer operations.
Motion to recommend article eighteen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nineteen is, article nineteen is the same, uh, depositing funds into the water stabilization account.
Motion to recommend article nineteen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article twenty is setting the annual maximum expenditure limitations for two revolving accounts that the town has, which were established through our bylaws and governed through the general laws. And this, uh, sets the expenditure limit for a transportation account and the Donahue Rowing Center.
Motion to recommend article twenty?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article twenty-one would receive chapter ninety funds, which are funds that come in from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for use by municipalities for roadway repair, improvements, and associated equipment.
Motion to recommend article twenty-one?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article twenty-two would be to transfer funds from the sale of cemetery lots to the perpetual care account for the management and embellishment of the cemetery.
Motion to recommend article twenty-two?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article twenty-three is an article that we use to set aside funds for water quality and lakes, ponds, and waterways within the community. We've reviewed these accounts, and no expenditures have been made since fiscal year twenty-three, and there is over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that is available to Lake Quinsigamon Commission and for use for other water bodies. So we are not proposing additional funds be placed into these accounts, given those, uh, account balances. So again, as I mentioned before, a one-dollar motion would be made, but we request that this article be defeated, therefore that you do not recommend passage.
Motion to recommend article twenty-three?
Second.
Can I make a quick comment on that one?
Oh, sure.
Just a quick comment, 'cause I did have a few conversations with the commission. And I, well, I understand that there's funds in there. I guess I don't necessarily wanna set a precedent of not funding it, 'cause I know some of the times, my understanding is they aren't able to spend the money because of a lot of regulations around the treatment and getting bids and actually executing projects. So I know this year, I think there's some additional costs that are gonna be incurred with Newton Pond, and there could be some other issues around having use of divers to do some work there because of there is some endangered plant life there. So I just caution us not wanting to put, it's small, and it's not, it's not, it wasn't a large expenditure, I think, on a yearly basis into the account, even though I know that, you know, like, as you mentioned, that there is funds available, because if they should need additional funding, they wouldn't really be able to access it until maybe a fall town meeting, correct? So that's just a, just a comment.
Motion was made and seconded to not.
Oh, sorry.
We'll just have to vote.
All in favor? Opposed?
No.
No.
Article twenty-four?
Article twenty-four provides funding for youth and family counseling services through Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. Uh, so this is an annual funding article to support their operations and dedicate staffing for Shrewsbury residents.
Move to recommend article twenty-four?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article twenty-five is the annual capital improvement plan that funds a variety of capital investments across the, the department, across, uh, a number of departments within the community, including vehicles and other large pieces of equipment that fall within, uh, the criteria of, of a capital investment within our fiscal policies.
Motion to recommend article twenty-five?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-six is the annual capital improvement plan for the sewer system.
Motion to recommend article twenty-six?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty-seven is the capital improvement plan for the stormwater system.
Motion to recommend article twenty-seven?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight is the annual capital improvement plan for the water system.
Motion to recommend article twenty-eight?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, our article twenty-nine is the, um, citizens petition regarding the regulation of sale and use of groundwater. We just had a presentation, so I'm not sure how much more detail we need to go in, but, Mr. Mizikar, do you have any comments? No pressure. You or anyone else.
I mean, I would just say from a, from an administration standpoint, um, this would be something that isn't going to overly burden town staff. We would regu-, we would regulate it through the, um, manager's office and the board of health, like we do styrofoam and a plastic bag bin. So from an administrative standpoint, I'm not overly concerned with costs associated with the institution of, of such a general bylaw. The exception would be the volume of places that sell items. You know, when it comes to styrofoam, it was prohibiting, you know, the use of those food containers and cups, so we have a finite number of businesses that engage in that, but I would say, um, it would be more akin to, to the plastic, uh, bags. And we would, in some ways, be forced to really enforce this program based upon feedback that we received from consumers or other businesses if a operator was not complying with the bylaw. So on a reactive basis, we just wouldn't have the opportunity to proactively enforce it. But we would incur costs from providing notifications once it's passed. But again, in the grand scheme of things, it's not significant.
You know, on, on one hand, I, um, I don't, I, I, I do think that there is a concern around, you know, the health impacts of, of microplastics. I am just not feeling like this is something I wanna impose on businesses or residents. I'm, I'm kind of a, you can make your choice. But I, I struggle with the whole, like, you know, how do you make a change? You know, it, it's these small things, but I just, I look at my role here. This is not why I think Shrewsbury residents wanted me to, you know, serve in this capacity. I just, I, I, I applaud, um, the petitioners, and, um, I think they did a great job. And I think they raised some important concerns that I hope that they will, um, take more, um, action to, um, educate others. If I had this overwhelming surge of residents who were like, please make this happen, that would be a completely different story. I'm not, I've talked to people, I, I don't, I'm not getting that, and so that is why I would, um, I would not be supporting this, um, this article at this time.
Yeah, I mean, um, just to kinda piggyback a little bit on what you said, right? Like, I think we've done quite a bit to encourage people to recycle and the, and make it easy, right? I think the carts are an excellent example of that. I get, my mind gets boggled by just the amount, the sheer amount of plastic, whether it's water bottles, cups from Starbucks, cups from Dunkin', um, sodas and Gatorade. Like, there's just so, so much. And if it's one community, people are just going to go someplace else, and they're gonna buy what they wanna buy. And again, like, to me, I think for a change to happen, people have to wanna make that change. Like, I made a conscious choice that I'm going to use a reusable glass water bottle, and that is what I do, and the same one, so I don't have twelve of them, 'cause that seems to be too many, like, right? And, and that's a personal choice that I make because I wanna reduce my use of single-use plastics, uh, my reliance on them. I, I'm, I'm not sure that it's my role as a select board member to impose my will in this regard on the residents of the community or the business owners of the community. That's not to say that I may feel differently when I'm sitting at town meeting, and I am a town meeting member with that hat on. But sitting right here, I am not planning to support this article, even though I am blown away by the work that the students petitioners did, um, their breadth of knowledge and, um, their passion for the topic.
I also applaud the young people for coming in. I am in support of this, uh, petition. I think that the petitioners did a good, excellent job at presenting, um, the environmental impacts, the, the research that they did on public health and the benefits to reducing microplastics. And, um, I think, as the petitioner said, this is a plastic reduction. And so it's a very small incremental step in the direction that we wanna go in. Um, I think it is in alignment with our, um, sustainability goals as a town. And, um, I think is, um, I think, again, it's just commendable that the young people came in, they saw a problem, and they, um, offered a solution that they've done a lot of research on. So I, um, I am in support of this, and those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Excuse me, I was very, I had, I had a lot of mixed feelings about this. Sort of all the same concerns that everybody has raised, um, tonight, and, um, I think ultimately I am going to vote yes in support of it, um, because I think it's, you know, I, I'm glad that it's a decision that will be made by town meeting. It is something, you know, it is, uh, if the, if this is what our community wants to see, then it is a decision of town meeting, so I'm glad, um, I'm happy to support it and bring it forward to them. I, I've heard a lot of mixed reactions to it. I heard a lot of people that were super supportive and really happy to see this, um, come forward. And, um, and then, you know, there were folks, of course, who, who said, you know, absolutely not, I, I don't support this. So, um, it is, it is going to be received, um, you know, it, it is a complicated question, I suppose. So I am gonna support it. I think ultimately I decided that I'm going to vote yes on it because I think that decisions around our, you know, environmental issues and things like that, that, you know, we have these young people that came here and had these concerns, and they did all this work and all this research. And it's their world that we're stewards of, right? And, um, and if this is something that, that our young people are passionate about, I'm happy to support it. I bring it to town meeting.
If, if I may just add, what I appreciated that they did with this, with their proposal, is that they, um, extended the, um, implementation period, um, I think, to take into consideration the businesses that will have to find an alternative path, um, for selling, for selling water. So I, I appreciated that, appreciated that they did that research and, and included that to extend that time and, and give those businesses the opportunity to learn more about why it is that they are proposing this, and if it passes at town meeting, um, you know, what the businesses will have to do to find the alternatives.
So, yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't support it. And I think I do really appreciate that presentation, but I think there was a lot of areas that I would like to see them gone in further. I mean, they did mention, you know, a minor health piece, but I think there's a way more dramatic health piece on young people around the choices that they're making dietarily and taking away something like convenience of a water. I don't want them to go to a soda or an energy drink or something else like that, which is, has way more, I think, immediate health impacts than potentially plastics. Plus, there's so many other plastics we're exposed to on a daily basis that it's just such a massive issue that I don't necessarily believe that this piece is gonna impact that. And I, and kind of what many of you had already said, I, I don't think our role is to be banning or telling people what to do. It's a choice. If people wanna choose, that's the choice. They wanna make the move away from that, do an alternative, whether it's aluminum or glass or something. By all means, that's your choice. But I, I don't think we should be forcing that, and, and also I really wanna see a little bit more about the impact of the businesses, specifically in Shrewsbury, about what their impact would be about some of that business, and then even having people, let's say, drive further away. What is the environmental impact of that? Because I'm driving further to go get, you know, cases of water that I want. So I just think, for those reasons, you know, I, I don't support this moving forward.
Well, appreciate the discussion. I'm sure it will be a robust discussion at town meetings, so, um, entertain a motion on article thirty-one, right? Uh, nope. Twenty-nine? Twenty-nine. I move to recommend article twenty-nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, what was the vote?
What was the vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, it was three recommend to not recommend. No? No, I'm sorry, opposite.
Okay.
Two recommend, three not recommend. Apologies.
Article thirty.
Article thirty is to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 200A, Section 9A with regards to account tailings. In summary, this is an action that the town can take once a, we issue a check, but it is not cashed within a certain period of time. It sets up a formal process of notification to the payee of the check and gives us an oppor, or a requirement to provide various forms of public notification, and then ultimately gives us the opportunity to recover those funds and place them back into availability for use and further appropriation by the town after, again, a certain period of time. So, believe it or not, from time to time, we issue checks, and they're not cashed for a variety of reasons, many of which we don't know, and despite our best efforts, we can never get the payee to cash the check. This will give us the oppor, opportunity to actually recover those funds and use them. Now, they just sit in a tailings account and are in limbo and not valuable to anyone.
Motion?
Motion to recommend Article thirty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thirty-one?
Article thirty-one would be for town meeting to designate a piece of land at 248 North Quincygan Avenue for use by Selco. Their intended use would be to construct a new, single-location headquarters for all of their administrative and external operating aspects of their department. This land was originally acquired by the town through a tax title taking and was subsequently identified for general municipal use by a town meeting vote.
I'll ask you a question. So I think this might be the first time that something like this has come before the board since I've been on, and I'm just curious. So it appears that we're not, they're not paying us for the land. So this will allow for the construction of headquarters for Selco, and does that, is there an assumption that if they vacate Municipal Drive, is that currently, like, will they sort of turn that back over to the town? Like, what, are there any, is there, are we sort of getting anything for this from Selco?
It's not an assumption, it is a requirement, right? So although Selco feels a little further removed, they're the same as the Treasurer Collector's Office or the Department of Public Works. They are Department of the Town of Shrewsbury. We have the same, I know you know most of this, right? Same federal identification number, say, you know what I mean? They are the Town of Shrewsbury. They have quasi-independence because they are a rate-setting entity that competes with private sector organizations, so they have some autonomy. But this is the process, you know, it's the same that happens, you know, on a school property. So when a, when a town property is identified for use by the school department, town meeting votes to set that as the use, and it remains under the care, custody, and control of the school committee until they no longer need it for educational purposes, and then it comes back to the town, right? So the town remains the foundational entity regardless of the department that has particular use of land for some certain amount of time, and then it reverts back to us. So, yeah, there is no exchange of funding, because that would be like, again, you know, the water department paying the town hall for a use of a piece of land. It just, it's unnecessary and duplicative. It's, it'd be transferring funds from one account to another account.
All right, thank you for clarifying that. There were, I had some questions from residents about that, you know, given the, recently they were looking at purchasing land in town that was privately owned and, you know, converting an existing property. And so there was, I had some residents asking me some questions that I thought that was, that was the answer that I had given them, but I was, wanted to clarify that that was actually the correct answer.
I don't think there's probably benefit to using town-owned land, just because if you're, if they were to go out and purchase land, that's actually eventually going to be borne by the rate payer, right? So if we're able to utilize a piece of town-owned land, that's a, it's a cost that the rate payers don't need to incur. Good? Motion recommend Article thirty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article thirty-two seeks town meeting's approval to establish a school building committee for the purposes of considering the addition and renovation of the Shrewsbury Public High School. This article also includes a small amount of funding for use by said building committee and their work over the next several months. This is the initial phase of the MSBA process, which would culminate in the fall with considerations of moving forward with some schematic design or design-level work for what the project would consist of. So again, this is establishing a building committee.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If you had asked me a week ago, I would have had a very different response to this article. I support the schools, I know that the high school is overcrowded, I also know that the voters spoke very loudly and said no to a municipal facilities optimization project a week ago. And so I'm really struggling with moving forward with another building committee, understanding the consequences of the vote last week, or trying to understand those consequences. Is the message that we need to slow down? Because if we need to slow down, then moving forward with a building committee at this point in time, to me, seems like we're not listening to what's being told to us. And so I, I am struggling with this. Mr. Mizzikar, are you able to kind of walk me through where the off-ramps might be on a project with a runway as long as the school project is?
Sure. So this building committee would work with the administration over the summer months and prepare a number, do an assessment, right? How many students do we have? How many students are we projected X number of years from now? What type of educational programming do we want to offer at the high school? And that will give us a general initial scope for a project that we would pursue. At that time, we've reached the end of this initial phase with the MSBA process, and we would move into the preliminary design phase. In order to move into the preliminary design phase, town meeting would have to vote to appropriate funding that would, you know, in advance of the MSBA inviting us into that phase. So I, excuse me, I would say that beyond this, the next vote of the town would come as soon as this fall special town meeting, and there would be a rather significant, depending on the eye of the holder, amount of money that would be required to fund the initial design phase, and I would say that's somewhere between two and a half and four and a half million dollars. We just don't know yet. That, you know, and that would take us forward for about eighteen to twenty months into the middle of calendar year 2027. And at that point in time, would be the next major community decision, which would be providing funding for the construction of whatever that project that would be designed over that twenty-month period. So you have this vote to establish the building committee, you would have a vote again this fall to fund some actual design work and put a preliminary conceptual design together that would then set the initial budget estimate and cost and get MSBA to push their chips in, if the community pushes our chips in, to fund the cost of this project. I do want to say that using that two and a half to four and a half million dollars is a really, you know, just a wild guess at this point, what this project may entail. It would be reimbursed at a rate of about fifty-two percent from the MSBA, so ultimately, the town would be responsible for half of that cost, as it would be for the whole project. But, you know, the town is required to appropriate the full amount before the MSBA would authorize us to move forward.
I appreciate that.
And I can just say, the one other thing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, but before I forget, you know, the July twenty-twenty-seven timeframe does have flexibility within it. You know, we have, it's a crazy number, it's like seven hundred some days or some... Nine hundred and thirty-two. Nine hundred and thirty some days from that, from MSBA accepting. If we move forward in the fall and town meeting appropriates funding, the MSBA would then vote to have us continue to move forward, and we'd have those nine hundred days beyond that. We anticipate that vote of the MSBA taking in February, of taking place in February of 2026. So that would push us well into the summer of 2028. So we have flexibility within that next phase, but, you know, it's either going to happen in the summer of 2027 or 2028 for construction funding if we just continue to move forward and stay within those MSBA windows.
I appreciate that. I'm going to be really interested in what town meeting has to say on this article. Maybe I'm completely off-base in what I'm, in the kind of thought process that I'm going through, right? Since I've been in town, and since I've been on this board, we've always had a plan, right? There's, you do this, then you do this, then you do this, right? And we don't usually do two things, buildings and this, at the same time. We have a real problem with the DPW and the town hall not having passed last week. Like, that problem didn't just evaporate, and I am hesitant to move on to the next building project when we still haven't resolved the issue of the town hall and the DPW. I need to understand what the community is trying to say to me with the vote. So I'm not able to reconcile my recommending this article because of what happened last week, if that makes sense. So I support the schools a hundred percent. I recognize that there's overcrowding at the high school. I understand that there's an opportunity to have the MSBA share the cost, but I'm just, I'm just not comfortable recommending this article, given what I don't know still went wrong last week.
Let me just clarify the timeline. So, well, actually, two clarifications. First on the timeline, was there any issues with the MSBA process if, for instance, this was brought back up and you formed the committee at, say, fall town meeting?
Yeah, so we're, we have a deadline to establish the building committee with the MSBA by early June, and extension was already granted, so we could bring it to town meeting. So I would say at this point, the lack of, if town meeting didn't establish the committee, we'd be removed from the process in that timeline that we are on, and we'd have to go back and reapply, start over.
Okay.
Which, the process started in March of 2024, so a little over a year ago, to make that application and get us to where we're going to be and accept it into the program thus far. So I do think we would be removed if we don't establish the building committee.
Okay. And then, just on the thirty-five thousand, as far as what expenditures, if, is what sounded like you were saying, we're just assessing over the summer the scope, which is what the charter essentially would be of the committee out of the gate? What would that be for?
So I would, at the latter end of that window of time, before we get to the special town meeting in the fall, it could be used by the committee if they need to consult with an expert in developing the budget and for the next phase of the scope of work. So I gave that range of two and a half to four and a half million dollars. But those funds would be spent ultimately for an owner's project manager and an architect to support the committee and do an initial design work, so that, I would envision those funds being used to bring an estimator or an expert in to give us some, some cost estimates on how much money we'd actually need to do that work.
Thank you. I, I fully, you know, Ms. Cass Vance's comments about hearing what the community is saying with the vote last week on the DPW municipal facilities project. I think that that problem hasn't gone away, and we need to address it. And we may be forced to address it in an emergency situation, which is, is sort of the least preferable situation. The high school, issue with the high school is also not going to go anywhere. It's not going to go away, it's not going to get better. And if we, if, you know, I'm also very interested to hear the discussion at town meeting. I think right now, if we vote, if we, if town meeting votes no on this, we just remove this entirely from the conversation. And it's a problem that is not ever going to go away, and is really not ever going to get less expensive. I think, you know, thirty-five thousand dollars is not a small amount of money, but in the grand scheme of everything that we do, I think moving forward with this right now is the right thing to do, because it will allow us to, this is essentially an information gathering, you know, project. What that, this is the step that we're in, is information gathering. So what this would allow us to do is go to fall town meeting with a full picture of what, what, or a more robust picture of what we're going to, what we're going to be deciding in the fall. And I think removing ourselves from this conversation with MSBA right now is, is not the right decision to make, so I am, I am going to vote in support of this.
I, I agree with Ms. Conlin's points. I think it's important for us to continue staying within the guidelines and with, within the timeline that MSBA has set out for us. It's been a long time for us to get to this point. And as Ms. Conlin said, this is information gathering, this is work that we will have to do eventually anyways. So I think it's important for us, we're in the process, they've accepted us up to this point, so let's gather that information. Let's also engage with the residents to understand why it is that they turned down, voted against the DPW project candidly from some of the conversations that I have had. There were residents who have, who have told me that they would vote, that they voted against DPW, but that they would support the high school expansion. So I think that when we do those listening sessions, it will be very informative, but I don't think it's prudent for us to step back now and get kicked out of the MSBA timeline, because it's a very long, a very long process. So I think just getting that information will help inform our discussions for later on, and that's important for us to make our decisions, important for the residents to understand what it is that they will be asked eventually if we get to that point. But, and I appreciate you asking about the run...
Off-ramps.
The off-ramps. Because there are multiple steps, there are multiple steps to get us up. So I'm, I'm fully in support. As I've said previously, I'm the only person who attended the high schools on this board, so I think I would like to see us continue being in the process.
I don't think my position will be a surprise to anyone, because I've been pretty consistent. I'm not in support of supporting this article, and I'm not in support of pursuing a high school expansion at this time, and it is purely fiscal. I just, I don't think we can afford it. And we did go through our capital planning, and I think that the DPW garage is structurally a critical need. And I think there's a lot of narrative around severe overcrowding at the high school. I didn't go to the high school. I have a daughter that graduated last year, I have a senior there, I have a junior there. I think I'm vicariously living it. You know, there's one thing about the cost of the actual project itself, and then the cost of additional programming and additional staff to support that programming. I don't feel as though we have been creative enough to look at alternatives before we go down this path. I think that I just, I don't think there's a tolerance in the town for this. I think this would be the most substantial capital project this town will have seen to that date, and I'm just, we can't afford it. And that really is, based on my conversations with, with, you know, residents and taxpayers, it's not that I don't support the schools, it's because I know it's going to be hard enough to continue the services we have, never mind this on top of it. And I just think that signaling to residents that we're even willing to explore this is just going to be a distraction for every other critical thing that we do need funding for. And so that is why I will not be in support of this. But, agree, thirty-five thousand dollars seems like a nominal investment, and then that forms a building committee, and then we know it's likely to be several million dollars just to do the feasibility study. And then it's, you know, and I understand the position of, well, you don't know until you go through that work. But again, I just don't have any indication that it's going to be any less than, you know, what we've sort of been hearing about before, and so I'll leave it at that. If there's no other discussion, entertain a motion.
I move to recommend Article thirty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So that is three no, two yes. And Article, next article is Article thirty three. Is that right? Yes.
So Article thirty three begins a series of actions from town meeting associated with the Community Preservation Act. The first is what's called statutory funding transfers where we move money into particular reserves that CPA funds can be, CPA funds can be used for, for projects. And so this is a very statutory exercise that places ten percent into the three primary accounts and leaves the rest in the reserve along with a fifty, a little over fifty thousand dollars for general administration of CPA programs.
Motion to recommend Article thirty three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article thirty four is the first CPA project which seeks funding for the Arrowwood Park playground equipment. Again, this is the use of CPA funds for those improvements on town property.
Discussion? Motion to recommend Article thirty four.
Second. I guess I, can I make a comment on this one? Because I, I know that there was a lot of discussion on this and I I listened to quite a bit of it. And I think there was a lot of concerns about the scale of the project and the amount of money that was going to be consumed. And I think I, when I, when I looked at it, when you have a bunch of other locations throughout the community that would also be similar, is that starting a trend of expectations where if you're going to do that in one part of town that we are going to be replicating this across the remainder of the community? And when we're getting effectively a million dollars a year in that fund, it's, it's a, it's a significant amount of that. And I think the majority of it is coming out of the the reserve, not out of the individual open space recreation. So I think there rightly so was a lot of concerns about the the size of that investment for a single location like that. So in my mind, I kind of agree with the the finance committee on this one and say that it it seems pretty significant amount of spend in in such a one location.
I, I agree, I think it is too significant. I struggle with, you know, the CPC, the the spirit of the CPC funds, but this was, I do think that there are this material amount of money should be focused on on other needs, so. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I I do, I I hear it, you know, what you're saying about the the cost of it. So just, I feel like this has been in front of the CPC for the last three years. And I have, I I probably shouldn't admit it, but I've watched every CPC meeting since their inception. So I feel like I've really followed this, you have too, right? So I can admit it, this is like a support group for people who watch too much local government TV. I I trust the CPC to vet these things a hundred percent and I know that they have and I know that the process has been long and detailed. I know it started out as a million dollars and that they have found a way to bring it down to the six hundred thousand that they're now asking for. And that they're managing to do that and still maintain something that's going to be accessible for all. I know there was concern about, okay, but what about all the other playgrounds in town? Is this just going to start a parade of playgrounds? And the answer to that was no, that this, this is a one, this is a one situation, like one, they're not going to keep going and doing other playgrounds. We would need to find other ways to do that. Also that CPC is supposed to come from the community, so the projects are supposed to come from the residents. And this is a resident led project. And I I really do want to see this go over the finish line because not only do I think it's the right thing for the community, but also, you know, the resident who's advocated for it, you know, it'd be great if her kids could actually still be of the age in which they would want to use the playground. Because she's worked really hard to bring this forward and gather the support that I think she needed to get it to this point. So I support this article.
I I also am in support of this article. I think that the purpose of the CPC was to create these, to to fund these opportunities for our open space and for our recreation space. And they have a steady, they have a steady stream of income. So for me, it's, you know, I know that they noted that there may not be a parade of parks, but if there was.
I know, I'm so distracted when it goes.
Right, I'm like, what's going on? If there was, I I trust that the CPC would vet those projects and that they would do the work to make sure that all of our parks are being supported. And if it's one park at a time, that may take many years to actualize all of our parks and, you know, bring them up to code or improve them, whatever it is. But I think, as Ms. Cass Van had noted, this is a resident led initiative. I'm really, it has been in front of the CPC for quite some time, so they have had a lot of discussions. And I think that as we look to the CPC to, for guidance on, you know, where they want the dollars to be spent, I I I trust what their recommendations are and the work that they've put in. And like I said, the CPC is is meant for these types of projects. It was created, the CPC was created and adopted by the community because they overwhelmingly, because they wanted to see support for our open space, for our recreation space, for all of the areas that CPC can can address. So that is why I'm in in full support and I'll be voting in favor.
Just to be clear, it's I, it's nothing against the the CPC at all. I think it's just a personal opinion about where those, you know, taxpayer funded dollars should be invested. So appreciate the discussion.
Can I make one comment? Because on, a thing I did read that I found interesting was when you talk, when you talk about the community, it was brought by the community. There was some concerns in the email from the petitioner about the project itself, which I know the CPC, his hands was tied because they said, hey, we really want that basketball court to get redone, it had to get pulled out because it wasn't, the CPC funds couldn't apply. And then there were some other concerns about, they were spending some additional money on landscaping, could we put that more towards another area? So I I understand that, but I, when I, when I read through there, I actually had some kind of concerns about the communication between the resident back and I think, you know, through planning department and from the CPC as well. So I just want to make sure that that resident would be getting what their expectations met, you know, that that they they did spend a lot of time and they have been pushing this for years. And I just would want to make sure that what actually got developed would actually meet their needs so that they would be satisfied with it as well.
Motion to recommend Article thirty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No, two no, three yes. Article thirty five.
Article thirty five is the second CPA article which is restoring mortgage and index ledger books that are under the custody and care of the town clerk. These are historic documents associated with parcels of land within the community.
Motion to recommend Article thirty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article thirty six seeks Community Preservation Act funding to make accessibility improvements on trails within Prospect Park.
Motion to recommend Article thirty six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article thirty seven.
Article thirty seven is the final CPA project which seeks funds to provide for design of a multi-use path around Jordan Pond.
Motion to recommend Article thirty seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article thirty eight.
Article thirty eight is the first of two zoning bylaw amendments. And this seeks to amend the definitions associated with easement and frontage in order to protect property owners' rights in the instance when the town needs to expand public rights of way for purposes of roadways and sidewalks and other matters.
Motion to recommend Article thirty eight. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Article thirty nine is the second zoning bylaw which seeks to update our bylaws in accordance with recent state legislation that provides for accessory dwelling units to be able to be constructed within all districts that allow for residential development.
Motion to recommend Article thirty nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Forty?
Article forty is a general bylaw amendment that seeks to change our general bylaws to allow the first instance of voting at town meeting to be through electronic means.
May I ask you a question about this? With, this refers to electronic tally at town meeting. And does that mean that what we're voting on here is is a system that will only, you know, count like how many yeses and how many noes there are? Or will it be a system, or is there a potential for it to be a system where it says, you know, Ms. Cass Van voted yes and Mr. Garcia voted no?
The latter.
So, okay.
But I think for practical purposes during town meeting, you'll just see the yes and no.
Okay.
But it does record it.
It will have that full record of who voted what on each article.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to recommend Article forty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article forty one would provide funding for those electronic voting devices if the bylaw was changed enabling that type of system.
Motion to recommend Article forty one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Forty two is the amendment of the general bylaws to allow for the, or require the undergrounding of overhead wires and removal of utility poles. This is a repeat from last year. We had a procedural error that was identified by the state when we submitted it. Required the planning board to hold a public hearing on this matter. They have done so, so we're seeking town meeting's reconsideration of this. It was passed in the previous annual town meeting.
Uh, motion to recommend Article forty two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Forty three?
Article forty three would provide the ability for the town to maintain and make minor repairs and improvements to private roadways within the community. Since the mid nineteen fifties, we provided snow and ice operations on private roadways through the acceptance of a general law. And through the acceptance of this general law, we would look to make repairs and improvements to private ways to provide for a public safety access and and the general public safety. So when conditions deteriorate significantly through major potholes or the like, we would make grading and minor asphalt repairs and improvements as deemed by the town staff and subject to appropriation.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to first acknowledge that I live on a private way. And because of that lived lived experience, I've had a lot of conversations with my neighbors and I've done a lot of research into what limitations that municipalities have in terms of helping the residents who live on those private ways. And it was through that research and through conversations with my colleagues here on the board that this article is is before us. And I'm in full support. Anecdotally, I've I've seen, seen and heard of many instances where public safety has to slow down in order to even navigate navigate the road. And I know in those situations, every second matters. And what I appreciate about this article is that it is very limited in that it's really just fixing up potholes. It's not bringing the streets up to convert them into public ways. It's not, this is not a betterment process. This is really just patching up some some work, some holes so that they're easier to access. And I think in speaking with, of course, my neighbors, but also other residents who live on private ways across the town, they have seen that, you know, we we already plow the private ways as Mr. Mizikar noted. And the the damage that those do to the roads is, can be significant. And it can be really costly for residents to try to upkeep those. So I think that this is a, is a nice, is is good for public safety and it and it's fair to the residents who live on those private ways. So I'm in, I'm in full support and hope that town meeting also supports it.
Agreed. I also live on a private way, so I should definitely put that out there, just to disclose. Living on a private way, I think, gives you a perspective around, like, people might say, well, why would you not just bring your street up to standards? Right, so the town could accept it. Well, in my case, my street is too narrow to ever become a standard street. It's not wide enough. And also, the way that my street is, there's another street that runs parallel to it. All those people on that street actually have their rear yard frontage on my street. And so through the betterment process, you have to get the majority of the people who have property on the street to approve, like, say yes. And there's no way people who are never going to drive on my street are ever going to vote to bring it up to the standards to be accepted by the town because why would they want to have a betterment assessed for a road they never drive on? Right, so my street will never become a, a, an accepted street. But again, when the temperatures are warmer like they've been and the streets don't freeze and the plows come through with the scrapers, they do create potholes. And so I think that there's value in being able to preserve the integrity of a street a little bit longer by filling a pothole in. And that's really what this is. And then the other piece of it too is I think a lot of times people who live on private ways might be renting. And so there really is less of an incentive for the property owner to do anything about the street because maybe they're not actually living on the street. And so again, I recommend this article, I support it, I hope town meeting does too. You know, everyone who lives on those streets are taxpayers, so.
I support it, I think it's reasonable based on, it is not because the two of you live on private ways. I'm not trying to like help you guys out, but I do think it is a reasonable accommodation for residents who are taxpayers of the town. So thank you for the disclosure and the comments. Anyone else?
Motion to recommend Article forty three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article forty four.
Article forty four is the final article for the annual town meeting and it seeks to make a minor amendment to section seven of the general bylaws, which is the Wetlands Protection Bylaw, which would provide a lower cost option for the notification of a butters associated with certain applications before the Conservation Commission. It would be a registered mail versus a certified mail with a return receipt. This was an error, it's very costly to send it that way, it's over seven dollars per mailing. And we're just looking to mitigate the cost to residents when they need to make these applications.
Motion to recommend Article forty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar for taking us through the, I usually pride myself on fairly quick meetings. And I know this is running long, but I thought it was important that we gave, that it's due attention. And I know some people think that there's a lot of unanimous voting, but I think this reveals, like, there's a lot that's standard, a lot that's not very controversial, if you will. But I think there was good discussion around the items where we're not in agreement, so thank you. Where are we? I think the rest of the agenda is fairly quick. Item ten is to review and act on a road closure request from the Recreation Department for Maple Ave, Main Street, Grafton Street, for the Memorial Day Parade from eight thirty AM to twelve PM on Monday, May twenty sixth. Oh, sorry, did I say, item eleven. Board members, this is fairly straightforward, any?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now I'm off, am I on? Twelve, okay, and my numbers are off.
Agenda item number twelve is to review and act to authorize the town manager to sign the First Amendment to the Project Funding Agreement regarding the Oak Middle School MSBA project. This item is related to Article thirty one of the actual, the two thousand and twenty three annual town meeting. Mr. Mizikar, maybe it'd be best if you gave just a brief summary of those.
Sure, so town meeting originally appropriated three point nine million dollars for this project. And when we went out to bid, we had very favorable bid results and they came in about one point two million dollars less than the estimate. Normally, the MSBA would ask that we adjust the budget immediately, but they didn't. So they finally got into us a year later or a little longer. So they finally got to us a year later or a little longer and they're asking us to move fundings into the owners' project contingency mainly for an accounting purpose. But it actually frees up money on their side that they can dedicate to another community and another project from an accounting standpoint. So that's the primary reason that we're signing or requesting to sign this project of funding agreement, which would be to move tho- those funds around. And then there's some minor change orders, less than less than a hundred thousand dollars associated with this project that has occurred. I'm sorry, a little less than two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars in total for total change orders. So it kind of nets out that we're moving a little over a million dollars into the project contingency.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number thirteen is to review an act to designate the following positions as special municipal employees pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter two-sixty-eight A. Specialist and instructor, instructor, excuse me. This item is being requested so that a current specialist in the Department of Public Works can also be employed as a yoga instructor for the Recreation Department. Under the Conflict of Interest Law, a municipal, a municipal employee is prohibited from holding multiple positions unless designated as a special municipal employee and our Director of Recreation provided us with a letter outlining her request to designate these two positions to leverage an employee who clearly has multiple talents off of the town.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda item number fourteen is to review an act on a proclamation and recognition of National Public Works Week, which is May eighteen through May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. It is sponsored by the American Public Works Association and this recognizes the contributions of our DPW staff for all their work on the town's critical infrastructure such as roads, water, sewers, public buildings, and recreational fields.
Move approval.
Can I, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
When we, because I, I see here in our, our drive that the proclamation will be printed on proclamation paper. Where is that displayed? I don't know. Justin, you have an answer for that?
I think the, the plan would be to present it to DPW staff through the DPW director there. What we've done in the past, particularly like with Arbor Day proclamations, is we've shared it through social media as well. So I can connect with Taylor about doing that because they certainly deserve the recognition.
Thank you. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Agenda item number fifteen is to review an act on a proclamation request from Linda Scanlon, One Lennox Drive in recognition of ALS Awareness Month, which is this month, the month of May.
I move the board approve the proclamation of Linda Scanlon in recognition of ALS Awareness Month.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number sixteen is to review an act on the one-day beer license application of Jesse Tarbell Sterling Street Brewery for the Food Truck Festival on June sixth, twenty-twenty-five from two PM to eight-thirty PM. The event is scheduled from four PM to seven-thirty PM, but this request to start at two and end at eight-thirty allows time for setup and breakdown after the festival. And this is the third annual food truck festival and I was asked to just sort of note that based on feedback, the Recreation Department plans to expand the area where alcohol may be consumed. The area will be staffed to ensure that no alcohol leaves the approved area. Apparently over the past three years, it was, you kind of had to just stand in this one little area. And now they're going to have a little bit more space, but it will still be a controlled environment. And because this applicant has previously been granted a one-day license without issues, they are not required to appear before this board.
Any discussion?
Just want to note, if I may, that I went, I attended last year with my family. It was really fun. Definitely encourage everyone to come out, not for the beer, but for the atmosphere. It was a really great event. A lot of, a lot of fun things for the kids to do and obviously a lot of great food, so.
I move the board approve the one-day beer license application of Jesse Tarbell Sterling Street Brewery for the Food Truck Festival on June sixth, twenty-twenty-five from two PM to eight-thirty PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next we'll move to correspondence. Item number seventeen is an email dated May first, twenty-twenty-five from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding an update house passage of sixty-one-point-four billion fiscal twenty-six state budget, so noted. Number eighteen is a memorandum dated May second, twenty-twenty-five from Nick Lapeka, Highway Division Manager regarding street sweeping report, so noted. Items nineteen through twenty-eight are ZBA decisions, also noted. So that concludes our agenda and if there is not anything else to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.